We're ready. Okay, if we could, everybody, please take their seats. I'd like to call committee meeting of the Cuyahoga County Intergovernmental and Collaboration Committee to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Calling the roll for the Cuyahoga County Intergovernmental Committee Meeting, Mr. Germana.
Here.
Mr. Schreit. Mr. Miller.
President.
Conwell.
President.
And Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, George. We also have Councilwoman Sunny Simon with us, joining us tonight. Of course, as you all know, the purpose of the meeting is to be hosting the Northeast Ohio City Council's Association in their forum, one of their four quarterly forums, with a very important topic. Is there anybody that has signed in for public comment?
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed in for public comment.
Well, what I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce the President of Northeast Ohio City Council Association and the Vice President of Programming. We have Danita Love from Highland Hills, who is the President, and Al Foster from Shaker Heights, who is the Programming Vice President. So the major business tonight was having this very important topic of collaboration with organizations and city other governments. So we're going to adjourn our meeting and let the Northeast Ohio City Council's Association conduct their forum. So if we could have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved and second to adjourn the Intergovernmental and Collaboration Meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned. Madam President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chuck. Welcome, everyone, to the Northeast Ohio City Council Association, sponsored by the Cuyahoga County Council Intergovernmental Relations and Collaboration Committee. I'd like to thank you all for hosting us or sponsoring us tonight. Our program tonight is how the six-year county property reappraisals and the appeals process impacts municipal budgets. And tonight, we have two speakers that are going to speak on that issue, and our Vice President of Programming, Al Foster, is going to introduce the speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Our first speaker will be Wade Steen, who is the Cuyahoga County Council First Fiscal Officer as of May 24, 2011. The fiscal officer pursuant to the county's new charter, which was approved by the voters of Cuyahoga County in 2009 and put into effect 2011, is responsible for the functions and duties of the former county auditor, county recorder, clerk of courts, auto title bureau, office of budget and management, and office of procurement and diversity and administration of the Board of Revision. The Office of County Treasurer is also part of the fiscal office in the new organizational structure. Wade is a native of Fremont, Ohio, and a graduate of Ohio State University Honors Program. He is a certified public accountant, and prior to assuming the position of fiscal officer, he was the managing partner of Steen and Company, an accounting and consulting firm in Columbus, Ohio. His past public service has included Franklin County Chief Fiscal Officer, Deputy State Auditor for the State of Ohio, Franklin County Treasurer, Upper Arlington City Council Member, as well as member of the Franklin County Rickenbacker Port Authority, and also was a member of the Franklin County Children's Services Board, to name a few. Wade and his wife Marty have four children, Zach, who is a junior at TCU, Emily, who is a sophomore at the University of Dayton, and Aaron and Taylor, who are still in high school. This time, I'd like to have Wade give your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to come and talk this evening a little bit about the county's current sexennial reappraisal that's going on right now. You're going to have two presentations, and I know that the agenda, I think, called for questions at the end, but if it's okay with the program chair, if there are questions as we go through, I would be more than happy to try to field those, because I view my role this evening as to try to answer any questions you might have and make you aware of what we're going through as we reappraise the property in Cuyahoga County. Then you'll have a presentation on the Board of Revision and how that process works and how that might impact you. My remarks will focus on a summary of the state laws that relates to reappraisal. I'm going to walk through a high-level review of the appraisal processes that relates to just residential property, our public notification, and the input we're going to seek from the community, Cuyahoga County's history as it relates to property values over the last 30 years, and then any questions you might have at the end. By state law, the tax commissioner orders reappraisals of all real property in every county at least once every six years. I have the order that was issued to then-county auditor Frank Russo back in January of 2010, and in accordance with that, the county began its reappraisal. Some keep... I'm sorry. Did I go backwards? There we go. My apologies, I wondered what happened to my slide. 571534 just basically mandates that the county auditor conduct the reappraisal as ordered by the tax commissioner. A little bit about the residential valuation process. And first, I'd like to talk about the CAMAS system. Some of you may be familiar with that. It's the computer-assisted mass appraisal. We in Cuyahoga County use Sigma as our software package, and our software package primarily will allow us to compile all kinds of data concerning physical characteristics, value, sales, and then that will incorporate all of the data into various valuation methods. And we will also compile a sales file, an inventory file. We will roll all that data together and then walk through all of the different steps that will lead us to multiple different values. I guess I want to emphasize this point, and it'll come up again. We use various modeling techniques. There's no one value we come up with on any particular property. We come up with various values that we compare to what we call our predictive model. The same analysis is being done simultaneously by the state of Ohio. The state of Ohio will compare their results to ours. Part of that's their quality assurance, check and balance on us, but we use all of the various valuation methods, because the sense is that there's no one exact right valuation method for every single area and every single property. And so we use all of the valuation methods, and we apply that across the county, across communities, and then across neighborhoods. And we'll talk a little bit later. You might then, you know, get a feel for why in one neighborhood, a certain valuation method would be preferable, and then another neighborhood, a different valuation may be I keep going backwards now. There we go. Sorry about that. Sales verification. What we're doing in the county right now is compiling our sales file and developing an inventory and determining valid versus invalid sales. Invalid sale would be one that's not arm's length. I was talking a little bit earlier about the impact of sheriff's sales, short sales, and foreclosures. They are not included in our sales file data, but I want to emphasize, they are included in our analysis when we determine value. And we're going to talk about how that will impact you, but if you were to include a sale that's not arm's length, that would basically taint that sales information. So we have to first inventory all of the sales that we can get our hands on and determine which ones are valid. The sales we're using for this reappraisal are sales that occurred between January 1, 2009, and May 31, 2011. There's no, what I would call, magic to that. We're obviously selling homes now in the county, but we had to cut off the period at some point. We cut that off at May 31, and we began as of 1/1/2009. Part of the reason was in our initial analysis and in planning, many of the sales in 2008 we weren't comfortable with as being a good gauge for the modeling that we were going to do using sales. So that's the period of sales that we're pulling in and evaluating. We'll use sales when we do our ratio studies, when we develop our predictive model. And when I say predictive model, we're going to try to predict what we assume value would be based upon those sales, and then we're going to compare that to all of the modeling we do and all of the other methods. It's, in some ways, I describe it like auditing. You know what you think the result will be, and you expect a certain deviation. You have some tolerable error that you will allow, and so our predictive model will tell us, are we too far off, is our deviation too far off from what we predicted, that we need to go back and relook at something, because it just doesn't seem accurate. We will also use the sales file to develop economic factors for the cost approach, and then we do comparable sales. The primary data groupings that we're using in Cuyahoga County are by region, and that doesn't mean the county. I mean, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. The west side of the county's different than the east side of the county. The southern part of the county's different. So we have different regions within the county. Then we break that down into municipalities. Parma's different than Shaker Heights. And then within the communities, if you think about Parma as an example, Councilman Germana is here, neighborhoods within Parma are different than other neighborhoods. And so you actually have to look at all levels, and what I tell everyone is, all of those play a role. You can't just look at, well, the home down the street sold for. That's one factor. That's just the neighborhood. What about what's going on within your municipality? What about what's going on within your region, within the county? So we'll break the data into those three subsets as we go through this, and those will be our data groupings. As I mentioned, municipalities are grouped into neighborhoods, and again, there really isn't a lot of magic to it. You have to look at the neighborhoods. This county has used kind of the same neighborhood configuration for a period of time. This is a mature county. The neighborhoods are mature neighborhoods, and so we felt comfortable with those groupings. The analysis will be different, but we felt comfortable with the groupings that have been used over the last number of appraisals within this county. Neighborhood profiles are then created for each neighborhood, and a neighborhood profile would include things like the parcel count within the neighborhood, the dwelling style and quality. Most neighborhoods tended to be built at the same time. They were similar size, similar style, similar materials. As you look around, you can say, I remember when that neighborhood was built. I remember when that one was built. There's a lot of similarity. Usually, their average dwelling has a similar selling price. We look at what the vacant lot sale prices are in Cuyahoga County. That didn't really come into play. There aren't a lot of vacant lots for sale. Then we also go through a percent of land allocation. How much land is allocated to each one of those parcels within that particular neighborhood? That should be similar. And we also look for three similar neighborhoods to the subject neighborhood. So again, I'll use Parma as the continued example. You have one neighborhood in Parma. We want to know what other three neighborhoods within that municipality are similar and characteristic to this neighborhood, so we have some predictive analysis to use. That is what we're using as far as land valuation. Then we rank neighborhoods by size, age, construction quality, lot size. And I guess I should stop. A lot of times, people say, hey, can we get all that detailed data? The answer is no. We would be in a bit of trouble, because if one neighborhood found out, boy, they were rated very poorly compared to this neighborhood, we're using that for valuation. It has no bearing on the residents or any other factor in that neighborhood, but we do need to look at the neighborhoods and gauge quality of that neighborhood based upon lot size, front footage, sheriff's sales, bank sales. All of that goes into our rankings of neighborhoods. And then after we get all those rankings, we group the neighborhoods by rank. So you could have a highly ranked neighborhood on the east side, one on the west side, one south, two within the same community, but you need to use those rankings to drive your Then the land, what I'll call the neighborhood rates, are then based upon either a standard foot frontage or an acreage. Again, depending on what the standard lot size within the particular area, you might have some areas where it's average lot size is a half acre or up. You go to other parts of the county, average lot size is much smaller, so we use front footage as our ranking. We roll all of this information, and in summary, to come up with a land value. The two pieces to valuation are land and building. And so right now, we're just trying to drive what the land value is on that particular And then the last thing that we would do as it relates to the land value is what we call site factors. And a site factor would be, now we've determined what a particular lot, square footage would be in a particular neighborhood based upon quality and all of the other factors, but then you also have a site factor to that particular site. And that would be something like, you have the same-sized lot as someone else in that same area, but you're on a very busy thoroughfare or street. Someone else is on a similar-sized lot one street behind you on a less-trafficked street. That would cause a negative factor on that busy street. Living on a busier street from a valuation standpoint is not viewed as attractive. So we would want to apply some site factors depending on where the land is located. Then we look at economic factors. We rank neighborhoods by region, and we stratify those rankings, as I mentioned, into five groups. We use that to calibrate costs. I've talked about our sales, that we've got this big sales file now. We use that to calibrate the sales file as we go about looking at, how do you apply that data that you've got from sales to the land and to the neighborhoods that you're looking And then the candidates for valuation, and we use a couple of different candidates for valuation. One would be a market model, which is driven primarily, that is going to be driven primarily by sales. We're going to look at it by region. We're going to look at it by municipality, and then by neighborhood. We're going to apply our predictive model to that and then see if we have any defaults that fall out of that. We're also going to look at the cost approach to that same particular parcel. You could grab a service such as Marshall and Swift. They'll give you what's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, split level in the Midwest, in northeast Ohio, what's the base cost for that? And then we'll establish economic factors for that particular parcel, and we'll apply that and come up with what we would call a cost model. Other candidates for values, we're going to look at comparable sales by neighborhood. We're also going to, excuse me. comps, when we talk about comparable sales, those are selected and weighted by neighborhood, land use, the total number of buildings within the neighborhood. If you think about that, if there are less homes in a particular neighborhood, the way you evaluate sales is going to have to be different than a neighborhood where there are a lot more sales, because more product means that's going to impact price and it's going to impact sales. Less product means it's going to impact price. Less opportunities might drive price up. We're also going to look at style, age, the living area, again, construction quality. We try to select five comps for every area, and we've gotten through one region, and we've tested a few. It's probably no surprise, there are many areas where we're having a hard time finding five arm's-length comp sales in certain neighborhoods. There just aren't five good sales. At that point, we might pull in a subject sale, and the selection of subject sales is one of those that's not arm's length, because you can't comp a whole neighborhood if you've only got two sales. If you've only got two arm's-length sales, it makes it really hard to get value, so then you have to start using alternative techniques, like expanding areas or looking at sales that are just not arm's length. So then, the last step, and I'm kind of getting to the end, and I'm looking out there. Does this sound as boring to you as it does to me reading through how we do this? Because I sit down with our appraisers and go through this information, and I've read through all the approaches that they use, but the thing that I keep coming back to is, we're using multiple approaches. We're using the same valuation system that other counties use, and then there's going to be a check and balance at the end, and then we're going to compare that. And what we'll do on the level of assessment is, what we'll do is, we'll compare what I call the certified value. And our notes say certified value. That's our proposed value. We'll compare that proposed value in a particular neighborhood and on a particular home to one that's sold. I mentioned, we have this sales file. We run this large comparison. This is what we thought value should be. This is what it sold for. How close are we? One of the other things we do to evaluate appraisal performance is, we'll compare our model to sales price. Again, we have this big sales file. We're comparing it to what we believe the proposed price should be, what the cost model gave us, what the median comp is in that area, as well as what our other models have produced. Which one is closest to what the sale is? Again, sale tends to be the best indicator of value if you've got an arm's-length sale, but we also have to have a model that we can apply across the county to value homes. We can't just go specifically on sales price. We also look at the impact of the appraisal. What is the model show us compared to what the current certified value is? If you compare the total cost to the certified value, what is the difference? If we look at median comp, it's what I keep saying is the certified value or the proposed value. What does that do? And then finally, at the very end of all of this, when we get to the point that we have the final certified value on every parcel in the county, how does that final certified value compare to what our predictive model was at the beginning? We're also sharing this information with the state of Ohio as we go through this, and they're telling us what they thought the values should be. How's this all play out in your local communities? All of the information I was describing culminates in producing a book. We have all of that data. Every single home still has a licensed appraiser that shows up in front of your door. Not literally, they don't knock on the door, but they're going up and down the street. And I shared with some of you, we do get phone calls, at least a couple a week, that there's some car moving very slowly down the street on one side, or very slowly down the street on the other side, or someone's walking with a clipboard that doesn't look familiar. But what that appraiser's doing is taking all of the information and all of the analysis I've just described. They're standing in front of a home, and it says, based upon all of our models, it says it should be this. But something may have happened. Maybe the owner is deceased, and the home has been vacant for a period of time. It's fallen into a little bit of disrepair. At that point, the model isn't what we have to go on. The appraiser has to apply professional judgment and say, looking at this home based upon what I see standing here, I believe the value to be this. And the appraiser has to document all of that reasoning, bring that back, and then we enter that value into the system. Because the appraisers are hired to determine, did all of the modeling we do derive a fair and honest value in the home, or are there other factors that they didn't note? Another thing that might show up is, by the time we get in front of that home, the home next door, there is an issue. Maybe it's become vacant. Maybe it's been in foreclosure. That will impact this home. I had mentioned earlier, the sheriff's sales and the foreclosures don't go into our modeling, except in a rare case when we might not have enough sales to be satisfied. But when you're standing in front of a home on a street where there are three foreclosures, clearly, that has an impact on the value of that home in that neighborhood. So I don't want anyone to think that doesn't play a role. That does play a role, and that is a factor here in Cuyahoga County right now, given the number of foreclosures that are occurring. But what we do then is, this is all going on by June of next summer, June of 2012, all of the residents in Cuyahoga County will receive a notification of what we believe the value of their property to be. There'll be numerous community meetings held with taxpayers to discuss the characteristics that we used and all the analysis that we came to, to derive their property value. In the past, I think we're going to talk about it in a minute, but I'll highlight this. In the past, there were typically 35 or so community meetings. We're going to have less meetings, but we're going to have more hours. There will be at least 11 meetings. There are 11 county council districts, and we're going to be working with the county council members to identify good locations. But one of the things we'll share with the council members, we know how many people showed up at each site the last time we did this, and this is the economy coming out. If three times more people showed up at location A than location B, that tells me we should probably go to location A. Some of the other factors that we look for are free parking and easy access, but we want to make sure that we get out to the community and out to the taxpayers and the homeowners as much as we can. We'll be present every hour that the Cuyahoga County Fair is open. I'm hopeful that council and the fair board will work with us and provide us a nice structure, preferably not a tent that has a floor and has air conditioning, so that any resident that's at the county fair can come in and sit down and spend time with us. One of the things I've talked with staff about is, they used to try to, I say, talk to as many residents as possible. We're still going to do that, but I don't want any resident to feel rushed. When they sit down, I want every one of our employees to take as much time as necessary to explain to the resident how the value was derived. This is easier for some than others. Some might be very confused and have questions, and I have told staff already, we're going to take as much time as we need with every resident, so that they at least have a comfort level with, how did you do your job? I mentioned earlier, I'm going to gauge success when we're done with the full appraisal, reappraisal, not with, did values go up or down, but is the community satisfied and are they confident we did a thorough job? That's my measure for success. It can't be on, are values going to go up or down? I probably get asked that question a couple times a week. Wade, what do you think? Are values going up or going down? And I tell everyone the same thing. I don't know at this point. We've only been in one neighborhood, and until we do a full and thorough analysis, there's no way we'll know if values went up or down, and some communities will go up and some communities will go down. After the community meetings end in October, we have to finalize values on every piece of property in Cuyahoga County and submit that to the Department of Tax Equalization. The tax commissioner has to concur with our values. So those tentative values we reach in June will be shared with the state, and we'll be going back and forth, because the state uses a different model. They use a little different modeling. They use a little different sales file than we do. A good example of that, to highlight, when we pull our sales file, we do what we call trimming, which means you drop off the sales, the 25% at the high end and the 25% at the low end, and focus on that 50% that are more in the median, because a low-low sale or a high-high sale can skew that from a statistical standpoint. We call trimming the shoulders, and that's what we've done here. And in my meetings with our appraisers, I'm comfortable with that trimming. The state does no trimming. So if you have a sale that is very low, it might be an arm's-length transaction, but for some reason, it was an outlier, that can skew your results. You might have an outlier on the high end, and all of a sudden, you have one high-end sale on one street, and everybody's values go up, and that's when the residents go, wait a minute, what happened? Well, someone overpaid for a home, maybe, but that's what they paid. We trim those, because we want to focus on what are the most common sales that occur in particular neighborhoods and particular areas. I mentioned, we're streamlining the process. We're looking at fewer sites, more flexible hours for taxpayers. We will be going to at least 8:00 at night on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays to begin. If we find out that that is the most popular time for taxpayers to come in, we'll start doing that on Monday or on Friday. We're also going to have Saturday hours. They didn't really have Saturday hours in the past. Hopefully, this doesn't sound like a criticism of my predecessor, but the hours tended to be the same working hours we have at the courthouse, with the idea being that it minimized overtime. I said, well, why don't we just shift people's work schedules during the summer, and instead of working from 8:30 to 4:30, why don't we work from 12 to 8? Some were surprised by that suggestion. I thought it just made sense, but that's, well, so that's what we're going to do during the appraisal period, is that we will have people working some alternative schedules. Again, we want to be out in the community when it's most convenient for all of you to get to us. We're also going to have our regional offices open, and at any time, anyone can come downtown. I say that, but I know it's very difficult because of all the construction. And so one of the things we want to try to do is make it as convenient as we can to be out in the community, that you can come in and talk with us about the decisions we've reached on value. As a close, I thought you might be interested in this. This is the valuation history. This is the county average since 1976. And as I like to point out in the staff, I'm a student of history. When Cuyahoga County experienced its greatest increase in home values, Jimmy Carter was president in 1979, 39.3%. If you would have bought a home in this county in 1973, by 1979, it would have gone up almost 80% in value. When we did our triennial, the stars are the full six-year reappraisal, that's the sexennial. 2009 was not that. The only time in history since this has been tracked that the county has experienced a decrease was three years ago, and it was on average about 8%. We don't know what this year's going to be, but if you total those percentages, the homeowners in this county have had a very, very good run. Property has appreciated here tremendously since 1976, but it's struggled in just the last, I would say, last four or five years here, and we'll see what 2012 yields. And with that, I'm done with my end. I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have about this section, or we can go right into what the Board of Revision processes. Yes? Can I take some questions?
I wanted to introduce Mr. Murphy first.
Okay.
At this point, I will. Our next speaker after Wade is Martin P. Murphy, who is the Acting Administrator of the Cuyahoga County Board of Revision. Following the confering of his Bachelor of Arts degree, Management Accounting from Bowden Wallace College- Bowden Wallace College, Mr. Murphy joined Sprint Incorporated, where he began honing skills in operations management, cost-benefit analysis, asset management, project management, and development of long-term operating strategies. While at Sprint, he earned a Master of Business Administration, also from Bowden Wallace College, before leaving to pursue a Master of Social Service Administration degree from Case Western Reserve University. Upon graduation from Case Western Reserve University, Mr. Murphy actively sought employment in the public sector and began working at the Cuyahoga County in 1994. In Cuyahoga County, he held numerous challenging positions, most recently in response to media attention highlighting problematic operations within the County Board of Revision in July 2010, and the conduction of a comprehensive performance analysis. Mr. Murphy was asked to step in and begin the process of revamping the operations of the Board of Revision. Over the past year, he has implemented procedural functional improvements, determined operational needs, adjusting staffing levels, and developed a functional annual budget for the board. He continues the process of improving constituent services, including technological upgrades, elimination of backlog cases, and the restoration of public trust and the fairness of real property tax evaluations in Cuyahoga County.
Wade? Yeah, there was one question I was going to take. Yes.
Paul, if you could come up to the mic in the center, because this is, you have to.
You're on film now.
And Paul, if I could just, before you, if I could just interject, I forgot when I opened this up. We welcome all the city council members to come. We thought it would be great for them to see their county council chambers. So we do have free parking passes. Trevor has them there at the end of the meeting. It's a blue form, and as long as you're parking in the Huntington Garage, the Cuyahoga County is picking up your parking tonight. And just as a matter of information, our county council meetings are the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, and any meeting in the evening, if you want to come down at a county council meeting, your parking will be paid for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Wade, thank you. It was a great presentation. A couple of questions I have is the physical inspection. After all of your data and you send your appraisers out, the physical inspection by that person, is there also a picture taken on the property?
By the appraiser?
Yes.
They wouldn't be taking a picture when they're there. They would be making notes, and the notes would be brought back. But they don't physically have cameras with them when they're doing that, when they're doing what I call the drive-by or walk-by. I'm hoping it's a walk more than a drive.
Okay, because, I mean, to me, you know, picture's worth a thousand words. The other question I would have, an example of how you factor, let's say, a 1,000-foot street from a main road to a freeway, and on that one side of the street is housing and commercial building, one commercial building, and on the other side of the street is the back end of a shopping plaza. Of the five houses on that property, or five parcels that are occupied, two are condemned, and two houses, one house is owned and occupied, the other house is rental property, and then one commercial building. So I guess part of the question is, is commercial buildings also being appraised this time, or is it just residential? And do, the fact that you said before, with two out of five homes condemned, boarded up, will that play a significant part in the evaluation of the existing properties that are being used?
Two-part question, yes. Commercial property as well as residential. I focused on residential, thinking that was of most interest, but we are actually reappraising every single parcel within the county. Second part, yes, it would definitely have an impact, being abutting, some commercial structure, a couple of abandoned homes. All of those things would negatively impact that value that would be driven off of what I would call one of our computer models through the camera system, but it would have a negative impact, yes.
Thank you very much.
There were two hands that went up. I told you, I'll take these two questions that I can, and then I'm going to give, but yeah, come on up, and then I'll give Marty a chance to do the BOR, because that's another chance to question your value, and then we'll take any questions anyone has.
Thank you. Peggy Cleary from Trivium Park and House on the Noco Board, and I want to thank you for your presentation. My question is, the formula, the criteria that you described to do your evaluation, your assessment, is that for just Cuyahoga County, or will that process be used throughout the 88 counties in Ohio? I guess I'm just wondering about the consistency, or how that formula was derived, if that makes sense.
The formula should be standard. There's standard appraisal techniques and formulas that are used. All of our appraisers are 33 residential, and eight commercial appraisers are all licensed appraisers in the state of Ohio. So they should all be following the same technique and modeling. Now, one difference might be where I talked about the trimming to develop your sales file. You may have another county auditor who doesn't trim. From a statistical standpoint, if we have anyone who studies statistics, they know that if you don't trim, the outliers on each end, you end to get, you get distorted results. So that's why we trim. But there are some counties that might not trim in that sense, but the techniques used should all be consistent amongst all 88 counties.
Okay, thank you.
And I saw one of the person had a hand.
It's only one question. And once you notify the different taxpayers of the proposed valuation, will any of this be placed on the internet?
The individual proposed values?
Yes.
The individual proposed values would not, because they're still proposed. Once they're final, they would be. If we had a proposed value, let's say for your home, your neighbor wouldn't know what your proposed value is. So that wouldn't be posted on the internet. But all of the chances to come in and ask questions, all of the chances, what we want to have is a long schedule of where are we going to be throughout the county over that period from July through October, so we can talk with residents. But the proposed is just a proposed. It's never final till November.
Since you said that, just one other then. Once you get the finals and it's posted, then you have, let's say you have a disagreement, and you want to put in an appeal, how long, I mean, afterwards, could you do that?
That's exactly what Marty's going to, that's a perfect segue. We didn't even ask you to ask that question. If you're not satisfied in November, when you get your tax bill, then this is the next stop you can go to right here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I would also like to extend a welcome to everybody who came down and joined us tonight, and also thank the county council for inviting us to present here tonight. I'll be spending a little bit of time talking about the Cuyahoga County Board of Revision. A piece of this will be about process, but a piece will also be, since some of you probably are most familiar with the Board of Revision as a result of many, many newspaper articles a year ago regarding the operations of the Board of Revision, I'll also give a little bit of history and describe where we are today within the board. The Board of Revision operates in Ohio under Chapter 5715 of the Ohio Revise Code, and the mandate is to determine fair value of real property within the county. Again, the board uses appraisal techniques, the three basic ones that Wade touched on, cost approach, value of land, plus the value of construction, arms-length sales, and income approach. Income approach is especially critical, and some of you may have homes that are being sold in short sales or foreclosure, or through the sheriff at this point in time, where they're selling for what would be well below what would be considered an arms-length sale. Many of these end up getting rented out. People then come in and appeal that the value of the home that they purchased is, and is now a rental that they put into productive use, is, you know, the $4,000 they paid in a foreclosure for that home. Because it is a rental, it's considered to be a commercial property, the Board of Revision would ask to see schedule ease, and would actually do an income approach to that, and people come away fairly shocked. And it's something that if you communicate that to your constituents, it would be helpful, that when it comes back and it's valued, it may be 60,000 or 70,000 because of an income-based approach. That's why. It's not necessarily, and it's a shock to many people who are first-time purchasers of these rental properties. The board decisions, if you disagree with a decision made by the Board of Revision, can be appealed in the appellate courts. And by that, I mean if you disagree within 30 days of receiving your certified notification as to the value of the property, you can submit an appeal with either the Board of Tax Appeals in Columbus or in the Court of Common Pleas. The Board of Tax Appeals, there's no charge for filing. Common Pleas has a $100 filing fee. If you disagree in either of those two venues, you can also then appeal into the Ohio Supreme Court. The other thing the board does is, once we have completed the process and we are through the appeal process, or the 30-day window is up to appeal, we have the duty to submit correction notices to the fiscal officer's real property division. So basically, in the old auditor's division, those values can be updated in the system. If we take a look at a little bit of the history with the board, and going back to 2003, you could see that in 2003, there are around 7,500 complaints, and that was a three-year update year. It fell down into the high 2000s the following two years. 2006 was a six-year update, and you saw a spike that's not unreasonable for a six-year update. 2007, it dropped off, but you can see in 2008, which should have been a lower year, the bottom fell from the market, and you really see where claims spiked, where we hit almost 30,000 claims in 2008 tax year. Those are the ones that came in in 2009, and were still sitting around last summer that got all the press. On top of that, there were another 20,000 or so that came in in 2010, and another 15,000 this year. We're anticipating next year, as the third year, next year, the tax year follows the calendar year. So next January, you'd be paying your 2010 taxes, you'd be paying the second half, you'd get your bill in June, be paying in July. We think that next year will be a little bit over 14,000 complaints. And then, once the appraisal is done, we'll jump back up into the low 20,000s. Some of the basics for filing a complaint with the Board of Tax Revision, and this goes to the question, was the six-year update will be certified in Columbus next year, sometime in mid to late November. It's generally before Thanksgiving. Once that happens, the county treasurer sends out the tax bill for the bills that would be due in January, the first tax bill for tax year 2012, paid in '13. As soon as that tax bill is released, and it's generally around the end of November, the door is then opened for you to file within the Board of Revision an appeal on your taxes. The logic being, if you don't know what your new certified value is, what are you appealing? So you can file, the filing period begins on December 1st, it ends March 31st, unless March 31st is a weekend, then it extends out until Monday. Complaints actually have to be filed, much like in court. They cannot be mailed on March 31st, even if it's certified mail or if it's express mail. They actually have to be filed within the board by the end of the filing deadline. Another thing is, every three years, you get the update. A taxpayer can only file a complaint on a parcel once per those three years, unless something extreme has happened. There's been some construction, there's been some destruction, there has been a transfer in the property, or if it's a rental, you've changed the amount of rental occupancy by 25%. Once you have filed a complaint, even if it's dismissed or withdrawn, it is still your complaint for that three-year window, and you do not get a second bite at the apple. Who can file a complaint within the board? Owners of residential property, commercial property, industrial property, and just about anybody else in the county. If you look at the owners, they are mostly filing to have a reduction in their value. I haven't seen a single owner file to increase it. The other people are generally filing, saying that they think it's too low, and it's primarily the school districts that are doing that. And if you go to the next slide, because public education is financed heavily through property tax, the school boards have a special piece within the Board of Revision. They can file counter complaints, and they can also file original complaints. With counter complaints, if you file a complaint as an owner, and it's over $50,000 of requested real value reduction, we automatically are required by law to notify the school boards by April 30th. The school boards then have a 45-day window to respond and file a counter complaint. They automatically also get notified for every single complaint that is commercial or industrial, and have the option of filing the counter complaint there. It's interesting, and just as a side note, that the basis and why they're in that special, you have to notify them category is roughly 60 cents, and it depends on the district, but roughly 60 cents of every property tax dollar in the county does go to the school districts. If we go into a little bit of the bad news from last year and compare it to this year, last year on September 9th, we had 28,843 complaints. This is that huge backlog that the Plain Dealer kept writing about, along with all the other things that were going on at the Board of Revision. On September 9th of this year, we were just over 10,000, and as of lunchtime today, we were under 10. We were at 9,910 complaints. If you look at, and this is a snapshot, if you go to the, this, and look at the green bar there, the 2011 bar, the top of this, the top line on this, is that 2011 bar, and what the three lower lines are, the tax years, the preceding tax years, and what pieces of those are still outstanding. As you can see, 2008 and the huge backlog, it's basically down to a few dozen cases, and it's essentially scheduling. We anticipate that everything in 2008 will be out the door by this time next month. 2009, we have under 2,500 cases, and then all the rest of the cases that are there are this current year. So we're now at a place from having backlogs of thousands and thousands and thousands to being well below 3,000 cases. And we anticipate that this will be wrapped up in the next four months, and when 2012 opens up, all we will have are the outliers from 2010. Wade really talked about this, so I'm not going to jump into it too heavily. But what the fiscal office does that's different than the Board of Revision is the fiscal office is trying to determine a prospective value. They're looking at that property and saying, okay, in 2012, and as Wade indicated, they cut off in May to start the process, in 2012, what's that value going to be, 2013 and 2014? So it's a look into the future. At the Board of Revision, the hearing process is historic. So now you're in 2013 and saying, what should it have been in 2012? So, and with that, you're integrating discovery, collection of process, and data to come to that type of determination. This is just a slide. I really didn't have a good place to plug it in, so I just slipped it in here. This year, the Board of Revision also began adjudicating foreclosure cases within the context of the Board of Revision. There was a special board that was doing it last year and part of the year before, I think. It's a fairly recent development, but there is an expedited process to move a lot of the foreclosures out of the courtrooms and return that land to productive use. Those properties, they have to be five years in arrears in taxes and have a bunch of other criteria. But as you can see, we're also dealing with foreclosures at the rate of around 100 a month. And as of last Friday, we had processed 663 Board of Revision foreclosure hearing cases where we have turned the property over to Community Development Centers. where we have turned the property over to community development centers, our community development corps, the City of Cleveland, or the County Land Bank. The do's and don'ts of filing at the Board of Revision, you should really state the reason why you feel the property value is in dispute. Again, a Schedule E for commercial is absolutely critical. If you are residential, absolutely arms-length sales, have the supporting evidence there, and also stick to the issues on the value or property. Don't state your taxes are too high. A tremendous number of people, really in the last couple of years, come in, and their argument as to why it should be lower is they've lost their job, the economy, employment, the neighborhood, and so forth. And it's really a fact-based process. It's quasi-judicial in nature, and you really have to articulate the issues that have a direct impact on the value. And I think that that's really it. I'm into questions and answers as well.
If I can, and thank you, Marty. One quick note on your Board of Revisions here, and I have a unique perspective because, as mentioned, I was the Franklin County Treasurer about 10 years ago, so I actually chaired the Board of Revision in Franklin County for the two years I held that office and sat through hearings. Your county council and county executive have taken a unique approach, and it's unique to every county in Ohio in that they hired 21 independent individuals who staffed the Board of Revision and hear the information that Marty talked about. There's not an elected treasurer, there's not an elected auditor who would have determined value, sitting there now trying to determine, was my assessment wrong? And there's not a representative from the county commissioner's office. So I say this with all due respect to your council and your executive. You probably have the most independent boards of revision in the state because the people sitting there, they have no vested interest other than to make the best assessment they can of property value. And as Marty pointed out with his charts, they're working hard to get through that backlog really, really quickly. And then lastly, he mentioned the appraisals and the money going to the schools. You might be curious, the county annually bills and collects more than $2 billion, $2 billion in property taxes that work their way through this tax assessment and collection system. So with that, we'd like to see if there are any questions for Marty about the BOR or me? I think you do. They want you there because then it's taped, and they're streaming this live, and they're going to run it later, I guess.
First of all, my name is Mark Bram. I'm a councilperson in Orange Village, and I also happen to be a real estate agent with Howard Hanna. So many homes we've seen have declined in value over the past, really the past three or four years. Many of the, I know of properties that I'm working with prospective buyers where the last time they sold, which really wasn't that long ago, possibly sold for upwards of $1 million and even over $1 million, that are currently on the market now for under 700,000. My question is this, when I'm working with buyers, especially in certain communities, the first question they ask is, what is the current valuation for tax purposes, and what can I expect if I purchased the home significantly less than the current valuation that's being placed on by the county? Certainly, they can go through the appeal process, but especially if there's a significant difference in where it's going to sell at, as an arms-length transaction certainly, if it's significantly less than where it's valued at, you know, what advice can I give them? What are their expectations as far as what the final taxes would be? And certainly, as you mentioned, the schools are going to not be pleased when a property is reappraised and the valuation goes down significantly. Obviously, they're going to, they have less money coming into their coffers, and they're not going to be happy. But, you know, what's more important, the, you know, the feelings of the schools or where it should properly be valued at?
I can answer the last one first. The most important thing is where it should properly be valued at. We don't bias towards schools or bias toward a homeowner. It's a good example you've offered. A home was $1 million, now it sells for 700,000, so there's a 30% drop. But all we can offer that person, all you can offer that person at this point is, you're not certain. We can't say that the sales price is going to be the price that it appraises at because that'll be one of the sales that goes into the sales file. It might be one of those outliers that gets bumped out. You might also have sales within that community where you have increases in value. A home was lower valued and sold for more, I'm not certain. But as we look at that neighborhood, I think it's safe to say if all of the sales, and you're a Realtor, so if you know all the sales are coming in below what the appraised value is, that probably the indicator within that particular neighborhood is going to come down. But I couldn't offer you any further, I guess even comment on how much that comes down, but I want to be clear that just because it sold for 700,000, and this I know frustrates some buyers, that doesn't mean that's what the appraised value is going to be when we go through our process. Because, like a lot of things, if they bought it for $700,000 that day, we're still doing analysis for a year. The characteristics and the value of that home change even over the next year, the economy could start to rebound and do better, and that would impact the value. But if they're all down, and you would know that better than I at this point in that particular area, if you're a Realtor there, if all the sales are down, I think it's safe that you can tell them there's probably going to be some erosion or decline in value, but I just can't say how much.
If you have an arms-length sale that you bring into the Board of Revision, as long as your documents are filled out properly and you are able to demonstrate an arms-length sale, there is no better evidence as to this house just sold for this amount as to what the fair value is. And it's more than likely that the board at that point would be giving the property owner that fair market value. That's what we're looking to do.
I mean, I think that's the way it should be, but I just wanted to be clear on that.
Absolutely.
What is an arms-length sale?
Goes by various definitions, but you have to have a willing seller who's listed the property for sale, and an unrelated buyer, and it's not in a short sale or a distressed sale where you had to sell it. So you're selling a home, you've listed, I'm a willing buyer, we negotiate back and forth, that's an arms-length sale versus I'm into foreclosure, it's in a sheriff's sale, or some arms-length sales are a parent selling the home to a child. Those are related parties, so you wouldn't necessarily be arms-length in some of those cases.
Today in Cuyahoga County also, there are a number of properties that are sold. They go with Howard Hanna or a Realtor, and after maybe a couple or three months on the market are sold, and they're sold in short sale. Even though they were with a Realtor, and even though the property sold on the open market, if it is a short sale, one of the parties was under duress, and the party that was under duress will actually get a 1099 from the bank to cover the piece of that short. So the value of that house in the market is truly not the short price.
Joe Price, Councilman in the city of Broadview Heights. We're having a dilemma in the city of Broadview Heights with property values, and I'd like to ask, how many people are coming to you for property devaluation because of gas wells? Gas wells? We've had, since House Bill 278 in 2003, 2004, we've had 7% of all-new gas wells in the state of Ohio located in the city of Broadview Heights. So we have industrial operations, basically operating in residential neighborhoods. Now, we have, of course, many non-participating members who feel that their property values have been grossly devalued because of it. And it's true, we have a lady who basically moved out of her home because her, you drive down her driveway, you can see a gas well 69 feet off her property. She literally moved out, has had the property for sale now for almost two years, and has not been able to even get an offer less than 100,000, less than what she's already paid for. So we're having properties that are being impacted, no different than if you, you know, brought in a shopping center into a residential neighborhood and property values would drop. So are you getting many of that, or are you having an impact with that?
I'm going to ask Marty because he would know about filings, if there have been particular filings relative to the gas wells in Broadview Heights.
I have not noticed any. If somebody had a house prior to the gas well, I mean, what we often get are people coming in showing pictures of a railroad track that preceded the house where it doesn't impact. If the gas well came after the house, then it is a reason to at least take a look at it.
And that would be factored in. Where I mentioned those factors, how close you are to a busy street and other factors, if that's something new, that would be one of those devaluing factors to the metric that I talked about when we were doing our ratios, that would be a devaluing factor. And I made a note, I'm going to ask our appraisers that are out in the field when they go to Broadview Heights, just kind of let me know what they see and what that's doing to what they're coming up with.
Well, we've been forced to learn more about gas wells than we ever wanted to learn. And in that, we have been told that FHA doesn't want any part of any property that has a gas well on it or within 300 feet of it. We've had people selling off their mineral rights and then walking away from the home. So we see a lot of different elements, but you brought up something very interesting to me. You said that if someone buys a devalued property and turns it into a rental property, you can actually increase the value of it and potentially increase it. What about these people? Now, of course, a very small minority part of the community is taking advantage of these mineral rights and causing the grief amongst their neighbors, bringing these industrial enterprises into their neighborhood. What about the people who sell off their mineral rights and they lease their land to host the wellhead and/or the oil storage tanks who have created this industrial enterprise in their backyards? They're now leasing off their property rights. Should they not be increasing their property values exponentially and you taking advantage of that? It could be a ploy that we could use as well to get them to think twice before they sign that lease.
Let me offer this because I'm not a licensed appraiser, I don't think. Let me ask one of our licensed appraisers in the office tomorrow about the issue of mineral rights, and if you have a website that we could, we'll give you a written answer on at least what they see and think. That would probably be the best versus just an opinion from someone who's not an expert. I'd want to find out because I am going to ask about this, but you raised a good point that should have some impact if it's revenue generating, but it also has a negative impact on others.
Well, recently, I also talked about with some of my colleagues that, you know, possibly as these property, these people are coming in asking for devaluation, could we possibly add that devaluation onto the property values that are taking advantage of this? So if I may approach, I'll leave some business cards if you can send that information, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. And I'm a former council member, as was mentioned, so I'm thinking about you as council members. I don't know how your local income tax code reads, but if mineral rights are not included, you might want to have your local finance director, city auditor, make sure they address that because if they get mineral rights revenue of $50,000, you at least want your local income tax to be accrued from that. And that's probably a unique situation that, it's kind of like gambling or winnings from the lottery. Usually, it happens after someone wins the lottery and the city finds out they lost money because it wasn't included. You might want to include mineral rights in there as a revenue that you can tap from a local income tax standpoint.
And that is another subject, and not really, you know, before you here today, but we have had issues with that out of the seven oil companies in our city. We found out only two of them have been paying income tax. They create divisional payments that try to keep the 1099 forms, you know, the fewer 1099 forms from going out there. So we're dealing with a whole host of nightmare of litany of elements in regards to this. But if you could look into that, we're also looking for any help that we can get to kind of slow this process down.
Thanks. Councilman from Moreland Hills, my name is Steve Richmond. Could you explain, clarify the board's position and/or its interpretation of state law as far as regarding who can file without an attorney, particularly in the case of a sole member LLC or a managing member or general partner of a partnership?
In terms of who can file without an attorney?
Without.
An owner of real property in Cuyahoga County can file without an attorney. A person with an ownership interest can file without an attorney. When you get into corporations, trustees, things like that, you have to seek counsel. A person could not file on behalf of a trustee or a trust.
No, because it's changed.
It changed tremendously about 18 months ago.
Right, okay. So now, any membership interest, whether it's majority or not majority, as long as you have an ownership interest?
As long as you have a recorded ownership interest. In terms of corporations, you do have to be registered in the state of Ohio. So if you're registered in Colorado and you own stuff in Ohio and you're not registered, you have no rights in Ohio to appeal that process.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Dan Lang. I'm a member of the North Fulton School Board, probably the only person that's on a school board here. As you know, many of us have taken really large hits in this recent state budget, so we're very concerned, especially the loss in revenue. My question specifically to Mr. Marty is counter complaints. How often do you see boards of education in the county prevailing in those, from what you've seen so far?
I have seen boards of education prevail. I have seen boards of education on commercial properties oftentimes have it increased. It depends on the situation and the evidence presented by the Board of Education and by the homeowner. I think that if the Board of Education is not at the table, you have little or no chance of winning. I would encourage you to have counsel. Some boards choose to file counter complaints on every single property they can that's valued over, that would have a $50,000 reduction. Others have internal formulas, and they weigh the tax value of the next levy versus what they may lose in those taxes.
Okay, and thank you.
I was going to say, and another thing that a Board of Education and the local government may want to consider is, when you say prevail, someone may be seeking a decrease of $100,000, but if the decrease is only $50,000, it's not as positive for the one filing, but you still didn't get the substantial decrease in value. And I think Marty's absolutely correct, you need to make sure that you're attentive to what is happening, so you'd want to be present.
And I do want to thank the county council and the county for putting this on, and also the association here. This is really good.
I'm Linda Plazinska, and I'm also another school board member from Richmond Heights. We have a few situations where we've had a sale, a home was purchased a few years earlier for 300 and some thousand dollars, and then it was sold again to a buyer. I think it was a bankrupt sale or something, and it was a $185,000 sale. Now, the situation is, we lose tax dollars each time, and these are brand-new homes. And further down the road, there's other homes that sold for even more, lesser square footage. What do we do? Do we wait till 2012? Right now, there's a lot of homes that are currently on the books in that particular area as far as proposed different rates, tax rates, and right now, the school board is deciding what is going to happen because there's a lot of issues. And plus, the developer and builder hasn't paid their taxes, so the school board has lost a lot of taxes that way with these new subdivisions. So here we are with the school board not receiving as much taxes as they should, and with other homes that are purchased in the same area that has sold for more money than this other nice, wonderful house. So we're dealing with that situation. Also, we're dealing with other situations where they were only assessed land value, and now they're saying that their taxes have increased. So I'm not stating specifically for those particular characters, I mean, those taxpayers, but they can talk to you personally about that. But we've had many issues in the particular area, and it goes from low valuation to a higher valuation. So what about, what is this going to do to our city? Because a lot of residents have complained that their homes have gone down in value. Myself, I'm concerned also because I am concerned my value has dropped, and I don't want it to drop. I want it to go up. drop. I want it to go up. So, will you be looking at situations as such and compare from different years? Or are you just going to be going according to 2010, 11 for the 2012 valuation?
When we, when we do the 2010 valuation, we would take into account all of the things that have happened that you've just described. But what, and Marty mentioned this, we're trying to determine what is the fair value on each piece of property, on each parcel as of January 1, 2012, which then is taxed in 2013. And if you have multiple transactions that happened, I think one of your questions, what should we do? And I think school boards have to look at it on a case-by-case basis because you will have some homes that sell for dramatically less, some homes that sell for more. And the question is, each school board has to ask, how many complaints do we want to file when a home sells for a little bit more than it's on the tax roll is for currently? And when homes drop, or is every homeowner filing on that? I wish I could give you better advice, but I think you have to look at it case-by-case, neighborhood by neighborhood. But we do hope to remedy some of this in 2012. And the hope is that you don't see dramatic drops in value because one of the challenges we have is many taxpayers, when they see that their property value has gone down by some amount, they expect almost a dollar-for-dollar decrease in the property taxes paid, and that doesn't happen. Because of House Bill 920 and the way the reduction factor works and the way your levies are issued, many times, you may see a $10,000 or $20,000 reduction in value and very little decrease in the amount of taxes paid. So, we get frustration from taxpayers then saying, hey, my value went down, where's my, where's my savings? And we have to then explain how taxes then are assessed and what the reduction factor means and all of the different levies that the voters have approved in the county. And so, there's not a dollar-for-dollar decrease. That's where we see the biggest frustration when we get done is, they expect there's going to be a big windfall. Or when they come see Marty, they expect a big windfall. And we were laughing the other, well, a month or so ago, we had a resident come in. I shouldn't say laughing, we don't want to laugh at residents, but it cost the resident more to actually come down, put their case on, just in gas, we figured, than if they would have prevailed at the value they wanted. I think they were asking for a $400 decrease.
Value $400 taxable. It was, I think, $10 or $12 once it was all said and done.
You had it on for-
Yes.
You didn't pay for gas.
Well, we have some residents who have tried to realize, should they sell now? Because the values are just going down and down, and maybe we should just sell now. So, you know, in other words, before the valuation decreases further. So, I mean, it just becomes one of those rolling balls. And also, in addition to what I just said, there's a lot of foreclosures that have sold for a very low price. So, and right now, they're coming with the suggestion that they should pay their taxes based on their foreclosed, what they, what they purchased this foreclosed home for. So, we have numerous problems, you know, saying, well, yes, this is what the house sold for, this is what I should pay for. And it just becomes ridiculous. So, I mean, you're going to have a lot of those, you already have, they're already in your books. So, but, and we've been notified of them. And it's just so serious. And like I said, it comes back to us because we don't receive those monies. And at the same time, it lowers our valuation in the city. So, right now, there is the assumption that the values of the homes aren't there. Even if you have a nice home, you know, the value's not there. So, what do you do? So, that's what we're faced with. And the hope that you answer those problems and make it a fair evaluation for 2012 for all of us.
Okay.
Thank you.
And one thing I can offer, and then I know there was a question, as your county fiscal officer, I don't feel comfortable giving advice on buying or selling homes. But some things that you should know are, and our county council members will know this, sales tax revenue went up again the last month. We just got our sales tax check this week, and it's up. There's $5 billion of capital construction going on in downtown Cleveland. Things are, I mean, I want to be careful that people don't get this feeling that things are just very bad. I mean, even if values stay flat or they do go down in some areas a little bit, in terms of the overall county, the economics of the county are starting to come back. We look at unemployment, we look at sales tax revenue. Both of those are trending positive in this past month. And we drive to work every day and see the construction going on right next door. And so, there are a lot of good things that are happening that are going to impact positively in the county.
Thank you very much. Before President Anita Love closes the meeting, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Steen and Mr. Murphy. When we approached you with the idea of having this forum, you did not hesitate in the slightest and thought it was a great idea. And I think it was a great presentation to give the people of Cuyahoga County the opportunity to learn about how professional this reappraisal is going to be and how professional the board of revision is being handled. It was brought to my attention that there may have been the impression when I was talking about the free parking, anytime there's a county council meeting in the evening after 4:00, it's just not city officials, but any citizen that wants to come and parks at the Huntington Garage, the county has agreed to pay for the, giving a voucher for the parking. So, thank you very much for your representation. I want to thank my colleagues for agreeing to let us host the Northeast Ohio City Council. And without further ado, President Anita Love.
Thank you. Thank you, Wade and Marty. It was a very insightful and very informative presentation. And NOCA, Northeast Ohio City Council Associate, really, really does appreciate your efforts to inform us and to help with the property taxes and appraisals in Cuyahoga County. Thank you very much. I'd like to also thank our members for coming out tonight and listening to the presentation. And I also want to remind you that our next forum will be November 17th, so mark your calendars. And we're going to deal with the water issues that we're having in the county. So, that should also be a very informative forum. So, mark your calendars. And thank you. Good night, and thanks for coming.
Thank you.